We have consideration of previous minutes. Mr. Delibro?
I make the motion to accept the previous minutes.
Second, Mr. Stewart. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carried.
You have special meeting minutes here too, you have to pass.
Thank you. Consideration of a special meeting from December?
Motion to accept the amended minutes from your organization in December 12.
Thank you, any second?
Second.
Mr. Cassetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Public session, is anyone from the public who would like to speak? Last call, anyone from the public, Mr. Mizanti? Please state your name and your address for the record.
Adrian Mizanti, 21 Castle Land. I'd like to say thanks to the Police Department, Department of Public Works, excellent job in arms and everything during the snowstorm. I got a suggestion, all the fire hydrants in Orange and Waterbury, they got these metal rods that come up, it'll save time, they could go and find them with these metal rods that are there, they hook on to the nut that's there, because Orange has them, Waterbury has them, and I was talking to the mayor about that today. It would save time if there's four feet of snow and you're digging around looking for a fire hydrant, you plant a rod, dig right there. They got them in Orange, they got them in Waterbury.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Last call, anyone else from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, seeing none, public session is closed. Public official session, Mayor Cassetti, please.
Good evening, President Vaccaro, members of the Board of Aldermen and residents of the great city of Ansonia. 2018 has started off with a bang. The recent snowstorm was quick-moving, but left us with a lot of cleanup. I want to thank Mike in Public Works, Jared at Arms, Chief Hale at the PD and the Fire Department, and everyone who helped during the storm to clean our streets and make sure our residents were safe, had access to city services, and that your everyday routines weren't disrupted completely. This past Sunday, residents made great use of Lynette Park, sledding, ice skating, and enjoying the fire pit. It was great to see parents and children taking advantage of our new winter wonderland. Thank you Greg for your help, Jeff Capola, thank you, and of course, Public Works as always. This event and others throughout the year is a nice way for municipal government to give something back to the community. Residents deserve to enjoy their city and to have recreational activities and events throughout the year. We want people to have fun despite the weather, and we will continue to provide these opportunities for our residents. Thank you for all you who participated. I also want to make sure our residents take advantage of the armory to walk indoors during the long winter months. It's good for your health and it's an easy way to stay active. We have very encouraging news from Assessor Marcia Benno. According to Marcia, the revaluation is indicating an estimated $91 million in assessed increase to our grand list. I want to also point out that before reval, we were also seeing annual increases in business, personal property, and motor vehicle taxes as a result of improvements being made to residential and commercial properties throughout the city. Good job Marcia and her assistant Dana. I also want to thank Joanna in the tax office for working to establish best practices and efficiencies in the department, which will help improve services and our collection rate efforts. These are positive ways in which our city departments can help the residents. I encourage all of the departments to look for efficient ways to run your departments and to look at the best practices as we work towards a common goal in providing quality services in a cost-effective manner. We want to continue to do everything we can to stabilize the tax rate, and by doing so, we are encouraging new businesses to relocate here and our current businesses to expand. You will hear more about this later on. Together, we are looking forward to a wonderful new year of positive change in the city of Ansonia. And finally, I want to ask for your thoughts and prayers for former superintendent of schools Bob Zura, who is rehabilitating at the Lord Chamberlain Convalescent Hospital. Bob, we pray for your recovery. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Are there any questions from the Alderman, from Mayor Cassetti? Thank you. Sheila Malli, development?
Oh, you want to go next, or?
John Marini, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. President, members of the board, tonight we have an important executive session on 65 Main Street. I believe you received two appraisals. Were those included in your packets?
No.
They were sent out via email.
Email, were there hard copies?
Nope.
It was too late in the day and it was...
I'm going to arrange now for a hard copy to be made for the board, so you can take a look at that as well on paper. But, take a look at the appraisal, one was for $1.8 million, the other for $1.9 million. We'll be reviewing more in executive session, but I will prepare now a hard copy for you to take a look at. Other than that, we're reminding people that it is snowing outside, there is snow to be cleared from sidewalks, we have new rules in effect, and we're trying to make the public aware of the potential of force if they let it go beyond 12 hours after a storm. We're getting some good response, we've heard from Alderman Castleitis that some of the thing going properties are finally starting to comply, and that was like pulling teeth in the past, but we still do have some areas and some pockets of residences that are just not shoveling even far after the 12-hour mark, so we will be doing some personal work there. Any questions?
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Marini? Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Stowe has a question.
Yes, Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Do you have a question, Sean?
Yeah, real quick, I just, because this meeting is getting taped, videotaped for the public to see, so I just want to congratulate Mr. King as being my fellow First Ward Alderman. Is there a conflict with vote and being on Alderman?
You know, my initial inclination is yes, I am reviewing the charter, and I'll have a definitive answer on that tomorrow. If there is a conflict, of course, Mr. King will have to resign his position on vote. I do want to double-check some charter provisions, but that's definitely on our agenda.
Well, I just, he's done an excellent job on vote, and I just, it'd be kind of odd for him to be able to be on the finance committee.
Yes, well, I can think of one conflict immediately, there's not so much of a conflict, but vote is supposed to be the first step in the budget process, and the Board of Aldermen the second, and that applies not just to the yearly budget, but to the budget reports that this board acts on. It really, it wouldn't, Mr. King wouldn't be able to sit on both and vote on both, so he would at the very least have to be on the Board of Aldermen abstaining from all, everything involving finance. So right off the bat, that's, you know, that may not work. So I'm going to review the charter and make a decision, but I think it'd be very likely that Mr. King will have to serve simply the Board of Aldermen, not Board of San Jose.
Thanks, Mr. Marini, just want to be transparent.
Any other questions, Mr. Marini?
Thank you.
Sheila Malli, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board of Aldermen. Some quick updates, Peck School, the Standard Demolition Company was out on, well, actually, they were scheduled to go out on Thursday last week, but they did go out on Friday to do some asbestos prep work, because they're going to be doing the removal shortly, weather permitting. So that's moving along. Once the asbestos removal is done, they can commence the demolition. Wakeley Avenue, J.I. Palucci from Brookfield was the contractor awarded for the bid, and we scheduled a meeting for the 11th, but we're waiting on the engineer for the inspection services, which went out to bid for, went out for a request for qualifications for inspection services for Wakeley. So once we get that in place, J.I. Palucci and the city will have a meeting regarding pre-construction meeting and also contract signing, and I'm looking, it looks like perhaps the week, the following week, the 18th, the week of the 18th for that. We talked about better packages in the past, better packages, and hopefully we'll have a ribbon cutting or a grand reopening, if you will, is expanding another 15,000 square feet with their sister company moving in from Tampa, but in addition to that, they're also looking at another 5,000, so that's 35,000 square feet total for better packages, which is good news for us, and good news for them as well, they're happy here, so just wanted you to be aware of that. Went to a, I serve on the Transportation Technical Authority Commission for the CAG, and we had a meeting this morning, we discussed several projects, one of them being Prindle Avenue, because Commissioner Redeker is coming on Friday to talk to the 19 communities in the CAG, and what the budget will do in terms of the lots of program, which is where we get Wakeley Avenue money and Prindle Avenue money, and what it will do with Tom A. Road as well, so he's going to talk a little bit about that, but I just, the good news is that I think our projects are safe, I don't think, I know that our projects are safe, so Wakeley and Prindle will not be cut, but some of the communities who are still in the design phase may see some cutbacks in their, in their projects, so thankfully, we're quite a way, quite a ways down the road, so I don't think there's, there's any danger. Prindle, the final design and approval should be done by April 2018, so we're looking to go out to bid right after that. I think, I think that's it, I wanted to talk to Mike and the mayor about, oh, okay, the armory. The scaffolding you see is still in place, according to the contractor, you can't, you can't re-point or rebuild at this point in time because of the, I guess, if free, the concrete freezes, or some of you probably already know better than I do, but, but they will continue, it will not be an extra cost to the city, but they will complete the project, hopefully, as soon as the weather breaks in the spring, early spring, so we'll do that. And then, and then we're going to look at ways of securing some additional money to do, to do another phase of the armory, exterior and interior, we're going to look at, we'll look at some ways we can perhaps get some more money for that project, it's just going to need more money, require additional funds. I'm sure there's more, but anyway, yes, yes.
There was a steam pipe that broke over here, I assume you got it fixed?
There was a steam pipe broke, someone from Public Works, I think Mike, you had mentioned it, and I...
Yeah, we're working on it, no, it's a, it's not aligned, that's, you have to re-rure the overhead, most comfortable way to do it. It's, although it is, it's actually rocking the ground, we've got, it's first of all, it's over. Well, I'm going to look back to the furnace, you know, after we repair it. I think it's almost $18,000.
Yeah, it's, you know, as you know, an older store building, and needs a lot of work, hasn't been maintained, but there's a willingness on this board's part to keep going, we're going to try to, maybe just to put some of my candy, okay, there's a willingness on this board's part to continue with that project, we will do so and look to secure some more money for it, but it's going to need help, some care going forward. Anything else?
Any further questions? Thank you, Sheila.
Okay.
Mr. Greg Martin?
Yes, thank you, President Vaccaro, evening, members of the board, just a couple of grand openings and another announcement, I guess, regarding the streetlights, but as the mayor discussed, we had the grand opening with the winter playground at Lynette Park, I'm estimating about 250 adults and children showed up, for all kinds of purposes, looked like everyone had a great time there. It's going to take a little bit of a weather beating the next couple of days, but the rain is really frozen solid like a iceberg, so I don't think the next couple of days in the 40s and 50s, and supposedly Saturday nights, back down to 10 degrees, so if anything, Sunday, place skating should be fine. Another grand opening, we had a little soft opening with Eddie's Bake Shop reopened, it's passed Saturday, someone brought a loaf of their rye bread in, and clearly, they're using the same recipe as the previous.
Very good.
It's very good. So, I, from what I spoke with the owners there, next week or so, they're just, you know, testing out different recipes, and then they'll probably do a nice formal grand opening in a couple of weeks. Main Street, right out in front, in front of the old Evening Sentinel Building, you can leave here, if you remember, just check out there, a couple of weeks ago, they installed double bracket lights. This is kind of a test, just to see if it does illuminate the area a little bit better, we're waiting on feedback from the UI, if there's any cost, because there may not be any cost to us for the brackets and for, again, for the installation of the lights, and if that's the case, we're going to give the green light to install these double lights up and down Main Street, and that should make a visible improvement in terms of lighting and night business, you know, the lights say it's very dim, dark, this should make a nice improvement, so, once, once we find out if there's a cost, there'll be a press release going out about that, and we can probably get the installation started, you know, any time this month. That's it for right now, any questions?
Could we look into what it would cost to put the basketball hoop respect on a pine lot, and maybe a way to maybe fundraise for it, or see if there's any grants that apply to it?
Yeah, I've actually, that's a, I got that on like a little Tuesday list for the springtime, and we've actually talked to Mike a little bit about that, putting maybe a second basket down Lynette Park, but maybe at least one basket there, I think if you make that a full court, you run the issue of basketball, it's going to go through like a neighbor's yard over there, I think at minimum, there'd be at least one court, or maybe instead of going, I guess, vertical, or maybe horizontal, maybe vertical, two baskets, so, you know, we're going to press that in the springtime. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a couple things to add.
Sure.
I apologize, I forgot, just wanted to mention that we, we did receive a grant for $20,000, I can't announce who gave us the grant, but it's going to go towards our, the first phase of our master development plan for Ansonia Copper and Brass, so, very happy about that. And then the other thing was that I forgot to mention, and I'll make it quick, Dave Connolly was kind enough to get some quotes for us on Chromebooks, which will be about $250 apiece, now $15 for the cases, and emails at $80 a year, for a total of $345 apiece for Chromebooks for this board, that's 14 Aldermen, 48/30 total, $4,830 total. If we have any interest in that, we do have interest in it, so, hope to see, you know, if that's, if that's the most, if that's the best way to do it.
Other questions?
Yes, Mr. Phil.
So the emails, you said it was $80 a year, is that through Gmail?
Right, that's our current provider, we use Gmail.
Are there any other, so my question is, are there any other internet service providers that can offer us a cheaper rate for the emails?
I don't know about cheaper, but I know, and I've talked briefly with Dave about this, and he might be able to answer in terms of Microsoft Office and Microsoft Exchange, I think the cost, or Rich also...
The whole cost is not for the email, the email's about $30, $35 a year, the archiving is another $45 a year, because we're with the city, we need to archive, sorry, I've got a seven-year archiving going on off-site, so that if we ever get a question on an FOI, we have full access to every email sent and received, and so that's part of that cost, is just to make sure we're covered on pre-written information.
Any other questions for Sheila? No, Mr. Beschira, you're next.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, been working to finalize the audit, we have finalized, we're verifying all the results of the auditor posted to our closing entries to the ledger, general fund is balanced, we are working on the special revenue funds now. The audit was filed timely with town clerk, we had one budgetary number that doesn't affect anything, so I'm going to, we're going to refile that book with the town clerk, it's just one page that actually needs to be reinserted, but there's no impact on the numbers that went out. When I do receive those copies, I'll put those in your mailbox, so you'll have access to one of the audit, and I'll coordinate with the auditor to have them here maybe for the March meeting, if that's okay, to just give the board an overview, and answer any questions you may have at that time. The 18, 19 budget submissions are being processed as we receive them, still several letter outstanding and a couple of are mine, so, I'm not the only, not everybody is in yet, but they should be in this week shortly, and we'll be working to develop this mayor's budget very, very soon. We're also going out to bond for about $3.1 million for the Riverside demolition, or the Old Sun Drive demolition, and also an additional $5.2 million bond for a portion of the 2016 referendum capital plan, so we'll be requesting bands also next month, should we need to have money for the police station, when that becomes a need, we'll issue bands for that on the anticipation notes, but we'll be bonding for some of them, so, as part of that process, we had a call with Standard Support yesterday, and we're going through the official statement process, so the bond sale will be on February 1st, I believe, so, we'll be working on that, and I think we did very well with the Standard Support call that we had with them, so, we're hopeful that our bond rating will maintain. Also have on, presented some information for financial data, and also I put on your, on your table, a request for a budget amendment that we'd like to have voted on tonight for discussion in the later meeting, and pretty much that's all I have for...
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Beschira? Mr. Stowe?
Richie, I was mentioning about, was it $19 million increase in the band list?
$91 million.
Maybe $1 million, what does that translate to revenue that goes back to $3 million?
Well, $91 million is approximately 10% of the grand list, our grand list is about $900 million, so that would be approximately a 10% increase in the grand list overall.
Mayor, $3 million?
The tax, the tax...
More tax revenue.
Yeah, I mean, that's all part of the, the redow process, yeah, $90 million at $35, so that's, that's really some fantastic moves, I would say, we all. Thanks, Mr. President. It's part of the redow, that's a whole process.
Thanks for all your hard work for bringing business back to Ansonia.
Absolutely. Thank you, jolly.
I was just going to ask, can I get an electronic copy of the audit that you have finalized?
One, it's fine, yeah, we're, we're, we have a couple, I can issue them all digitally also.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Beschira? Thank you, Rich. Chief Hale, Ansonia PD?
Yes, President, we're focused for the past seven days now, it's been snow and operation leading up to the storm, during the storm, after the storm, right now, we're focusing on snowball cars and sidewalks still. John had mentioned a year past, several orders, several months ago, sidewalks, and we're still seeing a number of residents not complying, not even compliant with that, so enforcement's the last resort, but we're at that point, we've already started snowball cars as well. Mayor declared a parking ban last Wednesday night, forecasted change during the day initially, we were not going to do that, and the line moved over, so we were, for the most part, compliance, we towed 76 cars, and probably had three times as many moved, so that's always a downside, there's a lot of work that goes involved, that's involved in a lot of multifamily homes with, a lot of shared parking, so it's always a challenge, so, people that work with us, and we appreciate that, again, it's not a perfect system, but I think we're pretty good, I think, teams are, again, that's our focus right now, is cars and sidewalks, so if you see any, please, I mean, they're out there, but if you see any, we'll try
Any questions for Chief Hale?
I just want to say thank you to you and your officers, I saw you guys out a lot in every neighborhood, you guys were very proactive and very busy, and I know it's a lot, I just want to say thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions for, for the chief? Thank you, chief. Mr. Delisio, Public Works?
I'll make it brief, same thing, all we've been working on is snow for the last week and a half, so, and actually, we're going out tonight, we're doing Main Street, I know our budget's kind of tight, it's short, but we got a lot of rain coming Friday, up and down Main Street all day, see people pulling on the sides of the roads, they're letting people out, so they're pulling closer out, so there's, someone's going to get hurt. Open the car door and you can't get by there, so we're going down the roads tonight, we're going to be cleaning the snow, the gutter lanes are, the storm drains are full of snow, so if it rains Friday, like they say, it'll be a river down Main Street, so we're out tonight, we have to get that snow off Main Street. So they'll be out tonight, they should be done by 7:00 in the morning, Main Street, all the side streets will be cleaned, and they'll go on to their normal duties, but they're out there doing, still doing sidewalks, our city sidewalks are pretty much done, we're cleaning intersections where we had to push them, 14 inches of snow, they're out with machines cleaning intersections, so people can walk, there's streets that people have not shoveled yet, so we're trying to do some, what we could, if people are out there, I'm trying to get them to shovel the sidewalks, was on Facebook today, Darlene and all, it puts on there, make sure people are, be aware, you know, your residents in towns, they have to be aware that they have to shovel the sidewalks, a lot of them don't do it, a lot of them are absentee landlords, you know, but, you know, I see people walking down the streets, clean, all of a sudden, it's got snow on the ground, they're walking out in the road, so we're trying to clean the gutter lines, so nobody gets killed, but we're keeping up with that. Picking up Christmas trees, usually 1,000 to 1,500 Christmas trees out in the road right now, so we're picking up Christmas trees, normal garbage, and that's about it, we're just, like I said, it's the snow, and it's, the snow budget's going to be dwindling pretty quick, we already went through like 500 ton of salt this year, and last year at this time, we barely went through anything, overtime budgets, kind of dwindled down, I mean, Richie was on me today about our budget, so I'm trying to do what I could, with public safety, you know, try to get the guys in and out as quick as I could, but when you got snow on the ground, like yesterday, we had that one inch, the guys were out there, it was quick, five hours, got the salt on the ground, but if you don't get out there, it's a rush hour, people can't get home, so you got to salt the area. Here's 150 ton of salt, just for a lousy one-inch storm, you got to cover the roads, and so, that's what we've been doing lately, trying to get cars moved, and the chief's been a big help, the officers really worked their tails off. Every time we called PD, they were right out there, they got the cars towed for us, and it did work, the van helped us, cars were off the road, we got to the curbs, that's why they look as good as they do, because we were able to get to the curbs, so the zigzag in between cars, so it worked out pretty well. That's about it.
It also avoids a plow hitting a car.
That also, I mean, you know, the west side, forget about it, the nine-foot plows won't make it down Jackson, any one of them streets, the street, they just don't make it, then you got to back out, because you can't turn around someone's driveway, you can't see where you're going, it's snowing, you can't see a foot in front of you, people are out there, snow blowing against the truck, there's snow blowing into the street after you cleaned it, trying to be nice to the residents, you know, they don't realize that, we just cleaned it, and there's snow blowing into the road, we go back to pushing again, and they want to know why we got the snow back on the curb, well, that's the snow you just blew out into the street that we have to clean, because these are the complaints that we get, but believe it or not, this last storm, we got, we had some, but nothing like normal, was it, it worked out very well. Good storm.
Thank you. Rich?
Is there any way we can talk to DOT about cleaning the Maple Street Bridge walkway a little better than what they did, because I saw a lot of people walking in the road today, especially with kids in strollers?
They did. Actually, we went out ourselves, we cleaned all three bridges, ourselves, we did it. They went out today, and they kind of made a mess on the left side, we cleaned the right side, we did Bridge Street, Maple Street, we did Division Street, and that's their job, but we went out there to do it, because there's people that use them bridges, they're walking in the street, they're going to get killed, so we went out there with our skister and cleaned it, and we did it, they're aware of it, they, we tried getting them out there, they said, "We're too busy, we can't get there," so in the meantime, we're taking care of the state bridges.
Appreciate it, you guys did a really good job.
You guys did a really good job. Fourth word, carbon, carbon, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Delisio? Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports, Finance Committee. Mr. Yaman.
Nothing to report this time. I know I'm gonna get an informational from Mr. Bescher.
We have a motion to pay all bills, if I'm to be accurate.
Ah, yes.
There a second? Second by Chicago Rivers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Public Works was covered. Arms Committee.
I have nothing this month, Mr. Chairman. I'll have something next month.
Thank you. WPCA, Mr. Stowe?
All quiet for now.
All quiet. Thank you. Fire. Mr. Schuer.
For the month of December, there were forty-eight calls to the department. There's some highlights. Eleven motor vehicle accidents, four seal investigations, three grass, brush fires, nine system faults, and two micro hazards, and five good intent public service, for a total of forty-eight calls for the month of December.
Thank you. Motion to accept Fire Committee report?
So moved.
Mr. Yaman, and seconded by Mr. Gleberl. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Ordinance Committee, Mr. Yaman.
Nothing to report. We're gonna plan on scheduling our first meeting probably end of this month, or February. Make sure everybody's all in.
Thank you. Any news on housing? Mr. Cassetti?
Yeah, Mr. President, on the twenty-seventh last month, we had a quick meeting. Managed to, we had a public, public session where it was discussed whether or not the thirty-day notice was required for tenants to give to the landlords before they move out, and the board said that they would convene on that and figure out what they were gonna do, and let, let the person who was at public session know what the determination was. For finances there, there's a three point five percent positive variance for the annual there, that comes out to a three hundred thirty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-seven dollar positive in the plus there. For reports by the executive director, the agency will have to resubmit, because there's questions for needs, for funds versus grants, and they weren't prepared to really complete that. Reports for compliance, all of the necessary requests for compliance of, of anything that needed to be done was completed, and they, they were very happy that that was, that was in order. The public housing operation itself had accepted ten thousand applications for vouchers, and out of the ten thousand, they're going to pick one thousand. And out of the one thousand, I guess there's a difference between six hundred and twenty-five to six hundred and eighty-seven, that will be granted the, the appropriate measures to have a place. As far as, there was a, there was a sick time, sick time problem where they, they did discuss, and they settled it. There were also four resolutions that were passed, and an adjournment. It was a pretty good meeting. I thought they did some good business step down.
Thank you for an excellent and detailed report. It's probably the best one I've heard in four years. Motion to, motion to accept Housing Authority report. Mr. Philippone, seconded by Mr. Schuer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Anyone from the Board of Education here tonight? No. Municipal reports.
Hang on, Mr. President.
Okay.
Any other committees, which would be salary, Mr. Murray?
What's up?
Salary was, the salary basis, A, B, and C, we broke it down, was pretty much finished, wasn't it? It looked like we, like we needed one more meeting to finish touches before bringing it to the full board. Okay, so Frank, Frank is now the chairman of that? So is there some way that you and Frank can finish that up, so in February's, February's meeting, it can be voted on by the full board?
Yep, I talked to, you know, in terms of transition to Alderman Dempsey. We took a look at materials as they stood, and we stopped working on it a month or two ago. And I do believe it's ready just for a finalization with the last meeting, so I would look to Alderman and DeLeveaux to call that meeting between now and February, full board, so we can prep it for passage.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you. We have, we have the assessor here. Marcia Fennell, anything to report tonight from the assessor's office?
Nothing. Working on it.
Nothing. Thank you. Okay, municipal reports. Mr. DeLever, yes.
Motion to accept vote recommendations?
Seconded by Mr. Castleitis. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. Controler approvals. Land use report.
King did abstain.
Oh, Mr. King, he didn't?
He did.
He did abstain. One abstention, Mr. King, thank you. Land use reports.
Just briefly, activity for December two thousand seventeen, there's still sixty-three active cases. Looks like the revenue for two thousand seventeen was, December of two thousand seventeen, eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-four cents. The period between July and December, it looks like total revenue was a hundred and forty-two thousand one twenty-three thirty-one. So I think a motion to accept the land use report.
Seconded by Mr. Castleitis. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. Yes, Mr. Castleitis.
Motion to accept the tax collector's report and request for refunds in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixteen cents, if I'm to be correct.
Seconded by Mr. Yaman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carried. Mr. Castleitis.
Motion to refer all accidents and claims to Corporation Council.
Seconded by Mr. Yaman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Communications. Mr. Cassetti.
Motion to forward to planning and zoning, the first communication concerning Mr. Natali Gianno on Ford Street, abandonment.
Seconded by Mr. Castleitis. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Communication number two, Mr. Tripp.
My name's odd, but it's just, I think, a fire.
Fire police?
Yeah, fire police. They put my name out, because I was the chairman of the Fire Commission.
Okay.
So Josh Schuer, you wanna take that?
Yeah, we have two, actually, communications, two and three go together, they're pretty much identical. The Fire Commission met in December and unanimously approved the appointments of Edward Sharkey Jr. to the Fire Police and Joe Giannetti to the Fire Police. And these are recommendations of the full board, of Alderman, for those nominations.
Thank you. There a second on that?
Second.
Mr. Cassetti? All, any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Resignations. I want to talk about Steve Solbisky. He never submitted a letter resigning from the Recreation Board, but he did, so he did resign in person at the Rec Board, so I couldn't tell you if he's still on or if he's not on. So let's just deal with the resignation from Jeff Devine.
Motion to accept Mr. Devine's resignation.
There a second? Seconded by Mr. Rivers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You have appointments? Cultural Commission?
Yeah, I make a motion to, motion to accept Stephanie Molsay, eighty-one Jackson Street, to the position on the Cultural Commission, term to expire one nine twenty-one. Thanks.
Motion by Mr. Yaman, seconded by Mr. Castleitis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes.
Maybe in spite of state, but I think it was an oversight, Jeffy Devine, recognition is recognition, we didn't do that one. Skip over Jeff Devine.
Oh, we did, we made a motion to accept that. Yes.
So I said.
Yes, Rich.
Make a motion to table the Recreation Commission appointments.
Motion to table Recreation. Seconded by Mr. Rivers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That brings us to, zoning Board of Appeals. Fair motion for putting Mr. Gianno on ZBAA?
Yeah, make a motion to appoint Mr. Gianno.
Motion by Mr. Cassetti, seconded by Mr. Philippone. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Yaman.
I don't have an opportunity to address this. I know he's worked pretty hard, he had a lot of communications.
Rich.
If you look at the budget adjustment, I forgot everyone, second page in shows basically the synopsis of the changes, as I've been able to interpret from what the state budget that passed in November, it's doing to the city of Ansonia. And in terms of where we were, presented where we were last year, approved and adjusted, and what we actually received, I've also put in the seventeen eighteen, what we approved back in June, and recommended change based on information, some of it being attached, and some of it being from discussions with various people. I'll go through, kind of briefly, with the, with some of the changes. Special education revenue, in the past, we used to take that as revenue, and that was an agreement between the Board for Education and the Board of Alderman last year, that they will use that special, excess special education revenue as a, an expenditure offset or a reduction of expenditures, and that was, in turn, we were gonna get approximately six hundred thousand dollars of in-kind expenses that we had paid previously, that they would take over them. So that remains the same. Though, Ed, minor change, the education equalizer. Last year, when we did our budget, it was, year five of our Alliance District Grant, we were not supposed to receive any more Alliance District money. Everyone we had talked to indicated that they would help us through additional money in ECS to compensate for the loss of that Alliance District Grant, which was approximately one point four million dollars. And so we upped that budget by about five or six hundred thousand dollars, and checked out about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, in anticipation of getting some extra money towards education. So when the final budget was passed by the state legislature, they gave the city of Ansonia, sixteen point six, was it? I don't have that total number. In essence, they gave us fifteen million or three. So yeah, about sixteen point five million dollars approximately. And the way they stated that is that the city of Ansonia, the ECS portion of the grant, would be determined by the amount of money the city received in fiscal year two thousand twelve, which historically has been our number for quite some time, fifteen million oh thirty-one six sixty-eight, that's our ECS portion of it. So that's the part that we keep. Additionally, the excess over that fifteen oh thirty-one six sixty-eight, or approximately one point one million dollars, will be given to the Board of Education as additional Alliance. They in essence said, anybody that was on Alliance District last year, even though you were falling off on the five-year plan, would still get it. So there are three additional towns that received Alliance District money, and we were one of them. So they're gonna receive this one point four million dollars in Alliance District money. So that's part of this puzzle that we go through. Also, there were some holdbacks that came into play with this after the fact. The governor had a hundred and eighty-two million dollars that he had to adjust the budget to after the legislature backed the budget, and there was some holdback, so there are some variations that are gonna come against that ECS, but it's been noted in one of the forms that we received, that the adjustment will go against the Alliance portion, not against the city's ECS portion. And it was approximately fifty-four thousand dollars. Circuit breaker, we budgeted a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for that. Marcia just gave me the numbers, and it's approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, that was there. So the elderly grant, which is a circuit breaker that we have here, gives our elderly people a break on their taxes, it's been reimbursed by the state to the city to compensate for that. Well, they did change the law, we still have to give the tax break, but the state has said that they will not reimburse us the money for it, so that revenue, not only do we, will we not receive the revenue, there will be a revenue loss on our side that I need to compensate for, for that hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So for that elderly circuit breaker on the revenue side, we're not gonna collect that money, and I'm a little out of my mind. Minimal changes to disabled veterans, pilot, National Tucket Fund. Municipal revenues area, sharing our MRSA, Lula Taxes, those, we had two grants last year, nineteen thousand six fifty-two and six hundred and forty-three thousand five one nine. Part of that was, I believe, also the motor vehicle cap grant, that was, maybe a little bit of that, but those two grants are gone away, and those are grants that we received where there, there were no restrictions on those monies, we were able to apply them to the budget. They did give, I'll check that, the Tom Road Aid was a minor change. They did give us a stabilization grant, and a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, and what they basically are saying, they were holding the city harmless. In essence, prior year, we had about seventeen point five million dollars in revenue from the state, and they kept us around that seventeen million, three hundred thousand dollar mark, stabilization was part of that. As we get into more detail of them, you'll understand that the total dollars may be the same, but what is occurring is that they're trading unrestricted dollars that they used to give us for restricted dollars, and because of that, we have to compensate for some of the things that we will be talking about here. So that stabilization was, is an unrestricted grant to help us compensate. The motor vehicle cap grant, something that we, the reason we held our motor vehicle tax bills up, because we weren't sure if it was gonna be thirty-two, or thirty-seven, or thirty-six, it really ended up being thirty-nine, so they brought that right out of the ballpark for us, and I believe next year goes to forty-five, so we won't, we won't be getting any revenues from the motor vehicle cap grant. LoSiP, which last year, we had budgeted LoSiP, then in December of last year, they came out saying there wasn't really any money for it, and that we wouldn't be receiving our allocation, which we normally receive in March, so we went to both, and this board, and we basically, we moved from last year's budget to LoSiP funds, so that we didn't spend it, because we would not be able to be reimbursed for it. So this year, again, included in that one seventeen million dollars, they're gonna give us three hundred and fifty, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of local capital improvement money. Again, this is restricted funds, because we can only use this for capital improvement items. Our biggest problem with that scenario is that most of our capital is being handled through our, our capital improvement grant, and through our capital fund, and we really don't have money in our general operating budget that we can offset that with. So they're taking, again, again, they took away money from the unrestricted dollars and gave us restricted dollars. This grant is a rollover grant, so if we don't end up spending it this year, that money rolls over to the following year, we will not lose this grant. So it's something that we can utilize either now or in So it's something that we can utilize either now or in the future. But again, we won't receive this money until at least March, and so normally we'll hold this until such time as I know it's in our, available to us. The municipal projects grants, $85,419, we did receive that last year. We received that on June 28. It's still in the budget currently. It's in our budget, it's in the state budget, but I've been advised, yeah, the state's not going to have any money come June, and you will not receive that. So I decided to take it out of our budget, both revenue and expense side. If we do happen to receive this money in June, we'll still be able to expend money on the other money from this year or include it next year. But I'm taking the safe road here by just saying, hey, we're not going to spend it if I'm not sure we're going to get it. Supplemental educational grant revenue, including in that the extra $1.4 million from the Alliance District grant approximately, and also they're going to be getting a priority District grant of another $400,000 plus dollars. So that's going to increase their, check that, priority District is not there, it's just the money from the Alliance District grant being added into there. Uh, 1.8, I apologize. 1.8 includes 1.4 and $400,000 of priority. So that's going to be in their supplemental educational grants. Those are the budgetary items, and below that are the non-budgetary items that affect our revenue stream. Renters rebate. The Sessions Office does, works with our renters to provide a credit that state given through OPM over the years. This budget still gives it, so the state budget will still give them that, and I believe they've already received it, but in the state's wisdom, they've decided that the city, check that, first one, so the circuit breaker, which is the $135,000, the elderly credit that we need to compensate for. So I'm going to lose revenue in our budget for that $135,000 because we still have to give the credit out, and we're not going to receive any money in it. The second line is the renters rebate of $50,000, and they're going to require that the city pay for half of the renters rebate now. So even though in the past they paid fully for it, now the city is going to have to pay for part of it, and what the state is going to do, OPM will reduce one of our OPM grants by that amount of money. They didn't tell us which one, we don't know where it's going to be, but I will be sure that $50,000 in one of the grants that we received. So I need to compensate or at least account for that. Veterans Industries Municipalities is a 2.5% reduction in there, small one out there. And the DECB reimbursement for taxes or credits to manufacturing companies in the city, they're no longer going to allow, pay for that to the city, and so we'll lose about $52,000 in revenue there that I need to accommodate to our revenue stream because our assessment shows that they were getting it, and the state was going to reimburse us, and now we're not going to get that. Total amount of money I need in the revenue side to compensate for is $1.455 million. Coming from the offsets on the bottom, where the expenses are, my recommendation is, because the Board of Education will be getting, even though the money they get is restricted funding of the $1.4 and the $400,000, to offset the $600,000 that we gave them operationally. I know we had some discussions with Mr. Nimmens and with Lisa Jones and Del Malone. I know they're going to have some difficulties, but part of what the Alliance paid for in prior years was the full funding of the full day K, which I believe they kept. I believe they should be able to use some of the Alliance money to compensate for the reduction in the operations that we're doing. And, you know, I've had discussions, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure how they will do it, but I believe they should be able to compensate for that within their budget internally. Additionally, they'll still end up with approximately another $1 million plus of additional grant money to do other things like reading and math and tutors and instructors that they had with Alliance in prior years. Their charge and trick is going to be, they really weren't aware of this until it happened after November, they're just getting information on it now, so they have to kind of spend all this money in half of a school year, basically. So they're going to have some, a lot of things that they need to be able to work out, and we'll work with them to try and figure out how all the balances fit. Again, I needed to add the LoSiP on the expense side and the revenue, so they're offsetting. The municipal projects, I reduced in from both sides, $85,000. And supplemental educational, again, we added the $1.8 million in the revenue side and the expenditure side. The net impact is that with all of this change, and even taking $600,000 off of the normal educational operating budget, we still need to hit our fund balances for almost $1 million up in the revenue section. In order to balance this without adding new tax bills or increasing the building, we need to take an additional $943,149 out of our fund balance to help support this. Now, the fund balance, last year at the end of fiscal year 16, on June 30 of 2016, we had approximately $9.7 million in the undesignedated fund balance. Coming forward into fiscal year 17, which we just completed the audit for, after all of our adjustments and changes and use of fund balance to stabilize the tax rate in fiscal year 17, the undesignedated portion of the fund balance dropped to approximately $6 million. Now, that's still about 10%, 9% to 10% of our budgetary, which is still a fair number, and where overall fund balance totals were approximately 20% of. It's not that it's a crazy number, but it is a lower number. This will drive that from $5 million down to, I'll check that, from $6 million down to approximately $5 million. And so it's, it's a thing that you need to understand and be aware of.
Which is still around 10% now, right?
$5 million is probably in that 8% range, which is our target. The intent here will be to hopefully drive the fund balance back up by doing some cost cutting and some other revenue searches to find additional revenue within our budget. My hope is that by the time we get to June of 2018, that what we've done with our fund balance to bring it down to this compensating adjustment is to get it back up to the $6 million range as of the end of June of 18. Going to need to work on it, we need to start tightening our belt a little bit in areas, we need to watch our money. But I'm still okay where we are. It's not that we should be super alarmed here, but we need to at least be aware that the number's coming down, and we need to be ready to react as we need. As we move forward, you know, we're going to learn more about this process with this coming budget that we're looking at. The biggest question mark out there currently is really what is the state going to give us for next fiscal year? And, you know, they gave us a whole bunch, they really have told us that they've held us harmless, but as you can see, it's costing us $1 million of our reserves in order to balance just what they've done versus what our budget was that we voted on in June. And we're pretty conservative overall, so. This is what I'm recommending in order to get there. If we don't do this, the actual numbers are still going to be actual numbers, and we will at the end of the year take the hit, but this at least allows us to do some modifications and changes. Board of Ed is the biggest part of this puzzle in that they're going to be, we're going to be taking $600,000 from their operational budget and adding $1.8 million into their grant supplemental educational grant line item. And they're going to have some magic, they're going to need to work to manipulate that to get it to work the way they need it to. In terms of the city, it's really costing us net $1 million in our reserve.
Thank you, that was quite a detailed report.
Well, I'm hopeful that the numbers are fairly accurate, but again, I'm trying to understand what the state is really doing, and some of the nuances, we're still finding out pieces that, oh yeah, you're not going to get that, or no, they're going to adjust this. So it's a complex year for us because of the line money we get from the state, but the state had to give their budget this year.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Beshear? Mr. Tripp?
Mr. President, is this a resolution we're voting on?
I don't think the motion was made yet. Fair motion, Mr. King?
I have one other question. I mean, what the state did to our, our budget, our rearrangement of the numbers, it left us with a lot less flexibility and kind of locked in where we could spend the money. So the way they did keep our promise to our school board and gave them the money by taking it out of the city side, so we have to make up for it besides cost cutting and terrible spending. I had a question, because the LoSiP, this goes back to both, but when we were doing last year's budget, we anticipated no money coming in for LoSiP.
Actually, last year, we, which year were you talking about?
For this fiscal year.
Yes.
We had, Mr. Beshear had said, we were quite conservative with the numbers.
Yeah.
We figured we weren't going to get anything, so we didn't give it our hopes of. Now that we did get the money from LoSiP, my question would be, if we divert that to cover our portion of the Wicked Avenue project, in that way direct it towards there, if we had already put that money aside?
Yeah, that's actually a really good, an excellent question, but I don't think you can match state funds with state funds.
Because that's what I figured.
Yeah, and Wicked Avenue is a mix of federal and state, so I don't think so. That's an excellent question.
So we'd have to find some more else to.
But again, that's not in my general fund, okay? The Wicked Avenue project is in the capital funding, and we've already done that match in prior years. We did $300,000 for.
We did that match almost two years ago.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm looking at current years, but you can say what's in the budget currently that I can use as capital improvement, and we really took everything out of the current operating budget that was capital and moved it to the referendum side of the equation.
Since a lot of the other projects are grant money, we're required to put up 10% of the cost for these projects. So not that, and LoSiP isn't available for us to use.
LoSiP is for capital improvement, but it's also state funding. And again, I think as Sheila said, they don't, they'll frown upon using state money to match state, state money, state federal money. The good thing with LoSiP is it's money that we don't lose, okay? If we don't spend it this year, it rolls to next year, and we can spend it. Historically, we've used this for a lot of reroach and repairs, you know, mostly tied to public works type things, but we've used it for communications, programs, and for some other things. So it's useful on capital type things when we get to it, and it does roll, and they've now funded it, it should be for at least another five or 10 years.
Perhaps we should save it this year.
So I'm not concerned if we don't have a spot for it, but it'll offset our reserve later, maybe down the road where we needed to go to reserve to buy a capital item, we'll be able to maybe use LoSiP to offset instead of going to reserve. So again, it'll be a trade-off over time.
Thank you.
Mr. Schuer, or Mr. Cassetti, yes?
Did I miss the dollar amount that we're talking about here? Was that $900,000, somewhere around there?
The fund balances income line is about halfway down in the revenue, that is $943,149. What the request would be here is the net difference column is what we're asking for approval of to adjust budgetary line items up and down by the amount of the difference column. And the revenue side, those non-budgetary revenues, in my opinion, would be just a, an adjustment to the tax collection revenue, that is where I would adjust those. But the total would be a revenue of $1.455 million and expenditures $1.455 million, and they should offset.
Mr. Yarmulke, yes?
I mean, I guess at this, unless, any further questions on that?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
So let me ask a question that, just for my own clarification. So discounting the $400, the priority District, we haven't been talking about that, they were getting that anyways, right?
I'm not sure. Again, I don't know that, and I didn't see that in part of the original. I think this was an extra $400,000 grant, but it was included on the letter that I saw for telling the Board of Ed that they were getting the Alliance and Priority District grant. So I'm not sure if it was originally included or not, I don't believe so.
Okay, so my question, I guess, so I know for the Alliance, when we, we were told about the school, when it was like July, whatever, they said, we're not getting this, we were told we're not getting. And that's why we fronted, I don't want to say fronted, but we.
Lent them the money, just spit it right out, the elephant in the kitchen.
Okay, so it was 600, plus 600. And then the 1.4 came in, so we're talking about basically a plus, basically 800,000 would be going to that, I mean, they'll be at 100% of the Alliance money, obviously, but the net would be 200,000 more than we actually had offered them initially, is that right? About 800,000 versus 600,000?
We had originally given them 600,000 more than their adjusted budget from the prior year and their operation. 650, Rich, you said it was 650, and then you read 600. That's okay, but I'm just, when you read that all through, you said 650. That was the agreement, and you're rounding it off to 600, which is, if that's. No, if you look at the budget for the Board of Education, year over year, there was a $600,000 increase, or 800,000, depending on whether you were comparing the original budget from '16 to '17, or the adjustment, this board gave them an additional $200,000 like on the 1st of July in the prior year. So there was a difference of whether it was 600,000 increase or an 800,000 on it, but we took the lower amount of 600,000, which I believe to be the correct increase year over year. So that $600,000, they had initially, if we had given them an additional 800,000 over that, they would have had everything that they requested. That 800,000 additional request pretty much amounted to the amount of the loss of Alliance that they wanted to maintain. And so they didn't, we didn't give them that 800,000. So if we had given them 800, they would have been fully funded. By doing what we're doing, by pulling back 600, then getting the Alliance of 1.4, that in essence brings them to an increase of that 800,000, which should give them the full amount of what they requested last year. And the priority will give them an additional 400,000 over what they even requested of this board. Again, those are restricted dollars, so they have to be spent on specific things that may, they're in the same boat we are, you can't spend them on everything. So they'll have some work to do to spend those restricted dollars. It might mean that they're spending on things that they're not normally doing part of the operations, but yes.
No, I understand the restricted part, I just remembered that 800, about 800 was the number we're talking about initially, yeah. Way back when, that was, that was about the target number.
That was.
And so now we're at that, it just reduces the hit for the city.
That was a poached target number. With this methodology, they should be about fully funded from what their request was, and additionally with priority, if it is an additional grant over and above that. But again, restricted dollars, to some extent, they're going to have their work cut out for them to manipulate some of that money back into the, into the operational side. But they did prior to this have approval to go full day K with Alliance money, and that's how they got to it.
And just to try to answer, the 1718 budget that they put out does not have priority in the year in the grant section, so I do, I believe that's additional, because there's nothing in there indicating that. They have the zeros for all of the Alliance and priorities on this.
Mr. Yarmulke, Mr. Tripp?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Beshear, just a few things for clarification. You lumped 200,000 from the previous year together with 600,000, all right? 200,000 was for the previous year, '16, '17, I remember that very specifically, all right? There was a move when we did the budget two years ago, all right? There was a motion to add 200,000, that was voted down. Yet a month later, the mayor awarded that 200,000 to the Board of Education, and then the Board of Almen approved it. That was the previous year, and you're lumping it together with a $600,000 increase in this fiscal year. That's not appropriate.
Now, that's in addition to it. By the word, uh, one vote. In other words, fiscal year... Okay, fiscal year '15-'16, Board of Education budget was 30 million, oh fifty-three. '16-'17 was 31 million, oh six oh. And then... '17-'18, '17-'18, 702, '17 is 31 million, eight six oh. So, the 31 million, oh six oh for '16-'17, in July of '16, we gave them an additional 200,000 dollars. So, their budget to me really became 31 million, two sixty. And then for the current fiscal year, '17-'18, we went up 600,000 additional over that to 31, eighty-sixty.
You need to spend it twice.
I have one more note for the benefit of the Aldman. Reading directly from the minutes of the meeting on June 20th, 2017, on page three. The first paragraph in bold print, "In addition, the Board of Education received a credit of $60,000 towards their 600,000 dollar payment of the excess cost grant resolution of February 14th. They will reimburse the city $540,000 instead of 600." So, the Board of Education, this last February, has already reimbursed the city $540,000. Is that correct, Mr. Beshear?
That would be correct. The city also gave the Board of Ed $1.5 million in excess in special education as an offset to their special education costs, in which prior to that resolution that we crafted between the two boards, the city kept as a revenue line item. So, that was the deal. They'll get the 1.5 million dollars that they can reduce expenditures on their special education costs, and the city in turn would get $540,000 of money back from the Board of Ed to pay for insurance, workers' comp, pension costs, that the city was paying on behalf of the Board of Education. The Board of Education in that would get about eight or nine hundred thousand dollars of more spending power within their budget.
But sir, doesn't that reflect the ever-increasing cost of special education, which the state of Connecticut then reimburses, and then they get refunded through the city to replenish their account, if you will? Is that correct, Mr. Beshear?
Once the special education revenue from the state where it belongs, in my opinion, in reality, we're talking with Mr. Connolly, there was not in... Special education costs have almost plateaued. Over three years, there was little or no increase in special education costs. But the way we were doing business with them, that resolution that this board and Board of Ed passed was good for them financially. It will hopefully have them not coming to this board looking for seven and eight percent increases because of special education. They're not getting that special education money in their hand, and they should be looking at normal two, three percent type increases. That should take the ratcheting effect out of the Board of Ed coming to this board and causing conflict between the two boards because of the numbers. I think on the long one, it was very good. I think they spent their money, they had money last year. They had some money left over that they should return to the city. I think they spent probably two or 300,000 dollars on books and computers late in June for this fiscal year. I believe that they had a fairly good amount of money to run their operation with the way that the thing all went through. The problem becomes you can't see it well, because the revenue really isn't a revenue line. It's a contra expenditure item, and so even though their expenditures show 33 million, with that 1.3 million as an offset, they're really spending 34 million three, 34 million four, but the way it comes out as a negative expenditure doesn't look as big. But it's the best way to do it financially and accounting-wise for everybody concerned, I believe.
Mr. Beshear, in essence, will the Board of Education have 1.2 million dollars more than they budgeted without the 600,000?
They'll have that more, but it will be in a restricted format similar to ours. Ultimately, that increase of 1 million dollars that they end up coming, that they get, is coming out of our reserve, because we need to take a million dollars out of our reserve net when we're done. When the state, doing their part, saying that they're making the city whole by giving us a similar or a very close amount of money, 17 million, three, 400,000 dollars in total. The problem with that process was they gave us that same amount of money, but they transferred it from a unrestricted format to a restricted format. It helps the state, because LOSEF money is bonded, so it's not coming out of their operational budget. They took money that was coming to us by MRSA that we had no restrictions on, took that away from us and said, "Oh yeah, we're going to give you bonded money," so it didn't have to go into their budget. It helped them, but in terms of what we're doing here, it's restricted on our end. It doesn't help us.
So, it looks like the city and, i.e. the reserve fund, is on the hook for like 600,000 at this point?
Almost a million. I mean, in order to balance this, we need 943,000 dollars from our reserve. Again, we anticipated from all indications that the state was going to help the city on unrestricted ECS funding by increasing that, and instead they gave us restricted Alliance dollars. So, there's a 600,000 short fall in the ECS of our budget estimate, another 600,000 short fall, because they took the MRSA grant away and gave us 130 in its place. There's the million one net difference when we're all done with that.
Mr. Yaman?
Mr. Beshear, just to be clear then, if, at the end of the day, if we do not adopt the recommendations and the budget adjustment, we would be looking to, you would be coming back here, including the 600,000 dollars, taking that back from the allocation to the Board of Education. We would be instead then looking to reserve about, what, take about 1.5-ish from the reserves if that money was not removed?
If that doesn't get approved and everything expended the way it would go through, changing the budget doesn't change the actual, okay? Fund accounting, you have the budgetary side, and you have the actual side. So, the actual side of things will not change.
It's the reverse.
The variances will become bigger or wider between line items, but the bottom line will be the bottom line. I'll take the hit for the million dollars at the end of the year. If we don't take back the 600,000 from the Board of Ed, they'll have the 600,000 that's currently been added for this fiscal year, plus the 1.4, plus the 400, which will put them at a point where they're probably over, yeah, 700, 800,000 dollars over what they even asked for on bottom line last year when they gave us. Again, restricted dollars, I can't say this enough. The restricted dollars on both sides has some major implications.
Mr. Stowe?
Do we have to make a motion just to transfer the Board of Ed money? Or is it, or do we have to make a different motion than that? Right now, the city has the Board of Ed's funds in their, in boats, you know? That money's in the contingency fund right now, is that right? And we need to transfer...
The motion isn't a transfer. The motion is actually to amend the budget. It's just statutory language. It's a budget amendment.
Okay, now to amend this budget, what is, what actual items are, do we have to...
Rich has an amended budget put together that vote approved last night, so this board would be for approval. These are the net changes.
So, verbally say the motion, what would we do? Would we say we're passing votes recommend budget from...
We would say we're adopting the amended budget pursuant to the Public Act. Are there changes to the amended budget in it?
It is, it is the motion, yes.
We're adopting the amended budget.
Didn't give them the full budget, just those outlines that we need to change within it.
Exactly.
Those are the, that represents the amendment.
Adopt the amended budget recommended.
I would like to say to adopt an amended budget pursuant to that Public Act, and of course, for the record, we would mark these changes as the amendment. And I'm correct in saying that the only amendments being made to existing budget are represented right there on that one paper.
I'd love to make the motion if I knew exactly how to say it. Adopt the amended budget represented to...
Go ahead, Mr. Tripp.
Mr. Beshear, when was the last time you spoke with Lisa, Bill Nims, and Dr. Malone about this?
I'm sorry to interrupt here, but I would like to make the motion so that then we can have the Congress, because that's the way you make the motion, and then we have the discussion so we can vote on this. I was the chairman last year, and we could stay here all day and tomorrow talking about this.
Make your motion, Mr. Stowe. Thank you.
I just want to get this...
So, your language that I would recommend would be a motion to adopt the amended budget before this board pursuant to Section 265 and 266 of State of Connecticut General Assembly Bill Number 15. Just trying to be fair. Motion to adopt the amendments...
Budget.
We're fully out. Motions to adopt the amendments to the 2017, 2018 city budget before this board pursuant to Section 265 and 266 of State of Connecticut General Assembly Bill Number 15.
You got that, Trish?
I do.
Thank you so much. That is the motion.
All you have to say is so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Yaman, second. Discussion, Mr. Tripp?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Beshear, the question I wanted to ask was, when was the last time you talked to Lisa, Bill Nims, and Dr. Malone about this?
We've talked, I was at Board of Ed within the last month. I talked to Bill on the phone. We've been emailing Lisa Jones also in the last week, and Carol explaining why I was doing. I had asked Bill actually if they had an alternative to do the suggestion, and I was open to suggestions, but ultimately, what the state was doing to us was going to affect our fund balance by a significant number. So, I pretty much explained what I had in mind to do, which I believe is my only alternative at this point on our side of the budget. I know they've indicated that they're not necessarily happy with it. I haven't heard alternative suggestions and availability as to what they do in my stead here.
Mr. President, I understand your concern. We want to keep these meetings brief, quick, succinct. I just have a brief statement to make.
Sure.
I'll make it succinct. I'll go as quick as I can, okay? I'd just like to review very quickly on the 20th of June, 2017. This Board of Aldman to include Aldman Stowe, Tripp, Bacaro, Castolitis, Dempsey, Yaman, Schuer, Blackwonder Libro voted to approve the budget to include, the slice that includes the Board of Education. Those are the Aldman who voted for it. They're here in this chamber right now. The budget was passed. The Board of Education set their budget based on the budget we passed on the 20th of June, 2017. Since then, we have now had a 91 million dollar increase in the grant list. We have money for Chromebooks for the Board of Aldman. The school year is already half over, so half their money is expended as budgeted, but now we want 600,000 dollars back from the Board of Education. Municipal government likes to give, but now we know where it likes to take from the Board of Education. This is the schoolchildren of the city of Ansonia. That's my opinion. This will affect schoolchildren's program, and, Mr. President, I request a roll call vote.
Mr. Stowe, we had a... Does he have a...
I want to, every person that Mr. Tripp mentioned, I want to commend for the hard work that it took to pass last year's budget under the pressure that the state has put us under, and that's first, okay? Mr. Connolly and Ms. Jones, is that correct, the new comptroller?
That's right.
Okay. At the last meeting, and I don't have the copy here in front of me. I didn't bring it with me. I didn't anticipate this. Both admitted or said that if we were overfunded by the state, that we would... Right after that was over with, we would discuss giving the money back to the city, that the money more, the money that the city more or less borrowed, lent to them, so that they could back up not having the Alliance fund. And now we've here, we've got more money. Now, this is just, I need to say this for myself. I'm sorry if it offends anybody, okay? This city has been lending money to our Board of Education for years to take care of our children in an effort to take care of our children. This administration has given more money than the previous administration in the last four years. Now, because of how we stretched ourselves by doing what I just described, we are on the edge of messing with our fund that can affect our bond rating that so that you would end up sitting here if you allowed every department to just have what they felt that they needed. You could end up losing your bond rating, and then you wouldn't be having the pleasure tonight to have somebody say, "We have 91 million dollars," or whatever it is, effective bigger grants. So, there's hard decisions that get made. The heartstrings get pulled. We all will feel like we need to finance something here. We'll have our own pet. It always seems to be that way. But we have a responsibility to bring that grant list up first. That takes care of everything else. Thank you.
Mr. Schuer?
I was just going to say that one hour before that meeting on June 20th, the Finance Committee met and we actually discussed the contingency plan, which was if extra money came in, that it would be subtracted from the total budget amount that we agreed upon. So, that was the same, pretty much the same people, Charlie, Stowe, Hill, Tripp, myself, Rich, Castolitis, Martin Dempsey, Joe Galman, Martin Dempsey, and Frank.
Grammy, Carol, there's no longer...
And we said specifically, we even said, "We'll make changes and adjustments as necessary based on changes in grants and revenue received by the state of Connecticut. We'll make an effort, joint effort, to allocate revenue and expenses as approved by the state to do what's best for the students and the taxpayers." And we would move that, and we would talk about it after the statement came in. And that was the problem, was it dragged on for so long that, as Charlie said, we fronted the money. But that was always the plan, was to come back to it then and say, "All right, now what's fair for..." It's not like we're taking money back. It's just we'll be adjusting.
Right, thank you. And we have to have all the, we have to have all taxpayers' considerations at heart. Mr. Yaman?
Mr. President, just briefly, I just wanted to also put on the record that the circumstances between June 20th and today changed. The state passed a budget, and that budget restricted certain monies in certain places falling for us. That's why they put the provision in the state budget to allow municipalities to open up budgets and do adjustments. That being said, in addition to that meeting on June 20th of the Finance Committee, we had a meeting on May 11 whereby the Board of Education appeared before the Finance Committee, and these same discussions were had, where the conversation, the ongoing conversation was that if the state budget was different, something we didn't anticipate, we would adjust accordingly. And that is exactly what we're trying to do here tonight with this resolution.
Thank you. Mr. King?
Just a comment on that. I know with both, when we passed the budget last year, and the Board of Aldman also agreed to fund the school system, they were concerned with the loss of the Alliance grant. They can't pay for certain projects. They can't pay for all their kindergarten. We concentrated on that and tried to come up with the best way to fund that. In good faith, funded it is not saying. There will be no Alliance grant. In fact, when they came, when the school board came and spoke to both, that was their burden. We have this. We're going to lose it, and we're going to lose these programs if you don't fund this. So, in good faith, we funded it. Alliance grant is here. That's, you know, kind of open and shut. They got their money. We lost money on the city side. We lost, I mean, we lost municipal revenue sharing. They weren't concerned about that. Who did we take that from? Can we get that back? It's not going to happen. It's the law. In previous years, every year with ECS funds, we did the budget in good faith. We'd go by the number that we knew that they got last year or previous year, so we kept it even. Upfront, no questions asked. They got the money. We didn't wait to see what came in. We wrote the check. They cashed it. They had the money. We wrote the check, they cashed it, they had the money. If less came in, we accepted. We didn't ask for what we got. Two years ago, they decided that they want the ECS money too, even though we used to give it to them upfront and include it with their budget from the beginning. We didn't wait till near the end of the year to find out how much we got. Gave them the ECS money. Okay? Next year, they come back, we still want more on top of that. When does it stop? I mean, if we're responsible for everyone, but even with this, with these changes to our budget, they come on and pop, because the state gave them the money. Basically, they invited them out to dinner, and they put it on our tab, because that's what we have here. We have, we're losing $943,000, and that includes with an adjustment of $600,000. I say take back its adjustment, because they receive twice as much as what we're losing. It's fair is fair. I mean, we went through this process, everyone agreed, we know what the numbers are. It's not taking anything away. And I'm just making these as comments, and I will abstain from the vote, because as an Alderman, I won't vote on this matter, because I've already given it consideration and voted for vote when we settled this, and voted unanimously on it. Yes.
Thank you. So the roll call vote was called for?
Mr. President, one last sentence. Just one last sentence. One last sentence.
Sure.
So we're making this adjustment without input from the Board of Education, and ECS is an acronym that stands for education cost sharing. Education cost sharing, not municipal cost sharing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Beshear?
Just so we're, everybody knows, this is my recommendation in order to keep taxes where they are, keep them low. There are alternatives that this board may, wanted to renegotiate the grant, or the agreement with the Board of Ed on the excess cost money for special education. This board may decide they want to go out and send additional tax bills out to compensate for this. I mean, this is not the only variation, and this certainly board doesn't have to approve what my recommendation is, but this was my charge to try and keep the budget without making any additional tax bills go out, would be that we have to use fund balance to do it.
You mean without burdening the taxpayers further, right?
Well, yeah. I mean, that's kind of what I was, the goal of this. But in doing so, again, we're using one-six of that fund balance as it exists now to compensate for this.
Thank you. So roll call vote?
Alderman Stowe?
I, yes would be the correct, the answer. Yes.
Alderman Yalman?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Absent.
Alderman Tripp?
No.
Alderman Bacaro?
Yes.
Alderman Crisetti?
Yes.
Alderman Felton?
Yes.
Alderman Dempsey?
Yes.
And Castleitis?
Yes.
Alderman Rivers?
Yes.
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Schuer?
Yes.
Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
Alderman DeLibro?
Yes.
So 12 yes, one no, and one abstention?
Motion carried, 12 yes, one no, and one abstention? Thank you. Ordinances? No ordinances tonight? New business? Is there any new business? Any new business? No. Old business? Mr. Stowe?
Mr. President, just a quick question that involves what we just did. Mayor's not sitting here. Mr. Brady, when do you think this board's going to actually see the mayor's proposed budget? Would you say March first, or...
I think we're still looking at the numbers against this particular because we have no reason to stay long at this point. I would think that March is a good...
Okay. All right, so we have a dream until now.
Yeah, I think March is a good one.
Traditionally, it was presented in February.
Yeah, the things with the state have simply gone to a good point where putting a budget out at that point is meaningless. I mean, well, we could pull one out, but it's going to be subject to...
As we did before, if we had to make changes.
Big alterations.
It would be clear going into a budget, doesn't work.
But we can get our municipal, an idea of municipal requests.
The spending portion, we can handle.
Any other new, any other old business? Executive session? Second by Mr. DeLibro? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay. Mr. Brady?
I asked for Mayor Sheila O'Malley.